How are you this evening?
I'm good, how are you?
Are you, you ready to Florida?
I am.
Have you been?
No.
I can see that the backyard. No, no kitty was over the other night and said guys we're all heading to Florida.
No.
Was it over?
Oh, yes.
He, he graces me with his presence quite often.
I thought it was just that once.
No, no, no. And clearly thinks he has an open invite. I think just why is.
I know.
Someone's on the car. No, he's in his truck because I was going down, I go through the signs. After he left my house.
Like call of meeting order, Lynda, you have her own call?
Mayor Crane.
Here.
Councilmember Martins.
Here.
Easter.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Randall's.
Here.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Alan, Amanda, welcome. Okay, you want to address us about something or? Amanda?
I've been approached by several people just about the IPNR grant and I wanted to get on the record what the plan is to finish out the remaining things before the inspection on the 23rd. Um, especially the overhead power line burial. I know that's a map, but they included with the DNR buried all forty of those power lines.
Yeah.
And I just need to know the timeline.
So it's not gonna, what, what we've done is we've got, uh, we bought solar lights that we're putting up. And we've taken, Jean and Tyler have taken all of the, the old lights down, removed all those wires. We're getting ready to do a, over at the baseball field, uh, remove a lot of those that go on over and then go down to the field. There, it, it's not gonna be done before June twenty-third. Yeah, but, but we have till, you know, September on this.
If we ask for an extension, yes.
We should be okay till September anyway.
Those wires, there's five of those lights at the park that are actually under wire, underground. We haven't pulled those wires.
Right, right.
Those remaining wires and then to do the rest of those on through the park, the other seven. And, and I mean, that should be.
Where, where at?
At the park.
What, what wires?
The underground wires for the, for the streetlights at the park.
Okay.
There's, there's five of them, I was told.
We gotta unhook them.
Well, I think, I think we purchased the wrong lights.
We won't be using any wires.
But what I've heard, I talked to Brandon Riddick's and, uh, his expertise tells us that those lights are not gonna last. The battery is not gonna last to, to power those throughout the winter. I mean, in the summertime, yeah, they'll get lots of, lots of power regenerated, but as far as those, those, those lights should really be underground and hardwired in.
That.
So maybe we've got the wrong lights.
I, I, I think these are the right lights, they're, these are not just, you know, cheap ones.
No.
These are, you know.
I don't think going solar i- is quite the answer from the information I've researched.
Okay, that's what I was told, um, I've researched it and.
So what, what is, why can't we go ahead and do what the grant allows us to do?
That, we're, we're doing what the grant allows us to do and that's remove the overhead lines.
But we have the buried lines.
No.
Part of the grant.
Not, not with this, it's not.
With these.
Not with the solar.
Well, I was, apparently I was, is that, is that what the grant says?
Well, it is, it is, no one had the power line burial plan, like I don't know the specifics as to what he purchased.
But you have a plan?
Yeah, of all of them in the park, there's forty of them that he buried. It's supposed, there was like a different stages to do it, just so we could get it done, like this was part of it because they will, they will put a special thing on our knee to protect that area when it's all set and done and have to be buried or else they will not protect it because those are a hazard.
So does that go beyond the park then?
No, I, I checked, I checked all this out with DNR. I checked all this out with DNR and it is, you know, perfectly acceptable to do this.
With solar lights.
Yeah.
Okay. So we can, we can divert from.
And we get, and we get a credit, there's gonna be credit because, and Amanda knows, they're environmentally friendly.
Yes.
And whenever you're doing solar or something. Now that's a, you know, I, there's some things that don't, you know, pan out.
Sure.
Um, our, our stoplight at Third and Pearl is solar. It work, works great and over here at, at Third and Liberty.
I think granted some things throughout the winter.
The other lines that are not exactly connected to the lights, like all the power lines have to be buried.
And that's.
In the power around the baseball fields.
Yeah.
And around all of the any reputation.
And that's what, that's what we're working towards. We're there to replace.
We're not like trenching everything out and. Machines for that, correct?
Boring machines.
Yeah, like they did from.
Yeah.
The, uh, the line from the tennis courts over to the shop, they, they, they.
The gas line?
Well, it was a, it was some sort of coaxel, like for the internet.
Okay.
It went from the corner of the shop out to the tennis court.
Yeah.
And they never, I mean, they never bothered anything.
No, they, they bored it.
Yeah.
Yeah, they bored.
Is that what you're talking about then, boring all those throughout, like for the baseball?
What we're over at baseball, we'll bore some, but we'll, we'll just direct dig it, we'll trench it, a lot of it.
That's just trench that water, right?
Yeah, yeah, we'll just trench it. Yeah.
So it will get done though, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
So what you're saying is that we would need an extension?
Well, so the DNR, they are meeting with us on site on the twenty-third of June.
Have you talked to Carmen?
I did, yes.
Okay.
Um, the twenty-third of June, in, I find they want ninety-five percent complete and ninety-five percent. Um, just because we don't have site and then you can't have the theater, the asphalt hasn't been modified.
Yeah.
There's no handicap accessible sites, um, and then the variable power lines, so.
So what do we need to do to get into that ninety-five percent, that's kind of, that's kind of scary being on a two-week schedule for ninety-five percent. I mean, what we're looking at now?
It, it doesn't have to be done by June twenty-third.
Okay.
We can ask for an extension at that time.
Yeah. And we'll be, we'll be granting the extension because of the way it worked out, we were delayed by the federal government at that time.
Because of COVID?
Well, that was, that was, that was the biggest part of it, yeah.
My other question is the road it got bored, um, it was supposed, we're supposed to cut ribbon on May twenty-ninth of twenty-twenty-one and that area is atrocious. It looks terrible.
It's.
Is the plan to put the road back in or take the road completely out and everything happen?
Well, we were gonna put it back in.
Okay.
But, you know, and we've had some electric work over there done and we, it's, with the, with the fences being gone, people just pull out. Uh, you know, out of the, onto Portland Arch Road, on the Third Street, everywhere.
That's a huge, uh, safety concern, running those roads through like in front of the stage, of course, and then there's kids going from this playground over to the other playground by the minority.
Well, the road was supposed to come out between the playground and the entertainment area there, that was in the plan, it didn't come out.
It was in, that was in the plan in two thousand and eighteen, not this one.
Well, it didn't change from that, that was supposed to happen.
Yeah.
But that would be less risky for me.
Is there, is there a plan in place for the volleyball thing to get changed, was she asking?
Yeah, yeah, Casey, Casey has, I mean, we've, we've done, you know.
What's the plan and what's the timeline?
People, people come, they drive around, they drive, you know.
Right, and what's the timeline, when are you gonna do it?
It'll be this summer.
What time, I mean, when?
I'm not, I don't know, Alan. I don't know.
It's been like four years, right?
I don't know, how long?
I haven't, we're supposed to cut ribbon May twenty-ninth of twenty-twenty-one, I have the press release that we did and we were awarded ten thousand dollars from that foundation, that was in twenty-twenty-one. Um, I came to one of the meetings in twenty-three about it again and.
Do we know what it was supposed to look like, is it supposed to have?
I have the.
Railroad ties, it's, or is it just supposed to be ground level?
It was supposed to be ground level, we were supposed to insert wood that would hold up the, the perimeter, they're still in the shed. Um, those are supposed to be installed inside the sand, but it was all gonna be level, so then there were, there was no need for like railroad ties or anything like the sand and it was gonna be, it was supposed, yeah, yes.
Gotcha.
And then the road was just gonna come out and then theater placed.
As far as what?
Just taking out what there's, what's in there.
We had to build it up because of the way it slopes down.
Right. But the, well, basketball courts or ground level theater that's not on the meat of like the west.
That makes sense what you did there, right? But, um.
Put the railroad ties in.
The whole, the whole thing is like from start to finish, it's like a two-week project, even if you redid the road, like that's how long it should, right?
Uh, I don't, I don't know, Alan, if I agree with that or not, but.
I'm just saying like, it just needs to be done, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
It looks like crap.
Yeah. It's, it's just, you know, it's hard to, to make it look good.
I understand, it, it really wouldn't be hard to get it done, right, delegate it to somebody to do it.
It's, Casey, you spent a lot of time on it trying to, you know.
Road just for safety concerns, but people still drive around it, we didn't want the ball to go over and the cars coming around the corner, so our best option was just take out the blacktop. Right, and then we put gravel back and then as far as the ties, we have to have a barrier somewhat and that's kind of.
Is there, or is there just a plan just to finish it to make it look, you know, it looks like crap?
From what it is right now, just to finish it out and make it look nice.
Even if there wasn't a road that went around it?
If we, if we don't put a road around it, then we just need to put barricades up to stop people.
Something to just clean it up.
Yeah, for us to know.
A lot of sand's already, you know, trickled down into that road, so it's, it's sand, but that's what they like, they like the sand on the road. So, yeah.
That's.
So you're leaving it up to Casey to address it?
Well, if we, if we're gonna, we need to, you know, if we're gonna put a road around it, then we need, you know, put gravel on it.
So it sounds like roads, a safety concern and it shouldn't stay out, but that's.
It's a safety, it's a safety concern with people pulling off Portland Arch Road and.
It's, and they're, they're gonna come off of Portland Arch Road regardless because there's nothing there to stop it and you can't police that, no. They sit and play, I don't know, the kids running, the cars coming around the basketball volleyball areas, we took it up. Yeah.
Came in, could we barricade that off?
Yeah, go pipe and fill them up with concrete. And I don't want wood barriers.
It's, here's what's gonna happen, if we put barricades up, there's gonna be more traffic. And Portland, and Portland Arch Road, because they're, that's where they're gonna park, they're gonna park on the west side of the pool.
And soccer especially will come off of that.
Oh, soccer.
Around the pool.
And they're all, they're on the con, they're on the stone all the way around the basketball courts.
Right, I mean, that's, that's.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't think that's true. I mean, nothing actually is, it's a concern, it's just, I guess, getting it finished, you know.
Yeah.
Reason.
Yeah.
Well, then it sounds like it would look cleaner if we just put a road back in and extended it out.
It prob.
Could that happen with the asphalt modification happen?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's gonna happen.
Portland Arch.
Yeah, we can put.
No, like, like around the, the volleyball court, just to continue a loop again.
Yeah. And, and there again, that's, you know, getting the asphalt people, you know, here on time.
Who's that?
Um, probably Matt Hessler.
Is there a plan in place to handle that?
Yeah, 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 because I talked to him about putting the, you know, the handicap over at the, um, oh, yeah, the restrooms at, like, baseball and softball.
When is he gonna do that?
Well, I don't know.
Okay.
Now, just wait, waiting on them, so.
Is there like, I mean, next meeting, uh, the next council meeting?
We'll probably know when he's gonna do it.
So by next council meeting, you'll be playing?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and the railing, I talked to Kogan to, he told me what they were gonna do, it sounded like they're gonna do some sort of picture, like the stage and then show what, what the railings will look like. Before they put them on, but then they gotta get all their exact measures, so I think there's some sort of laser measurements on those as well, so tomorrow they'll be there.
Okay.
And that'll speed up that process as well.
That's good.
Yeah, and it, and all of it.
Yeah. Yep.
What's, what's?
That's okay.
I was gonna ask.
Did you have anything else?
Getting a lot of use.
What's that?
What's that?
Oh my God, people are wearing.
Need more of those.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Need more of those.
It looks, and it looks nice, I like the black fencing, I like that, we'll get that around the pool, we'd be.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know what we stand on that.
Well, I, I have pricing on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Pricing on the pump house too, because it's.
Yeah, well, I, I told, I told people to go ahead with that two years ago and they haven't yet, so, Alan, you wanna do that?
What's that?
Uh, cover the, the, uh, building at the pool. The pump house. Um, need siding, need siding, needs roofing.
Yeah, we can do that. I'll come call those guys out, is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, talk to him, because I had, uh, it's so hard to get anybody, I had, you know, some of the others doing it.
It may be more structural.
It just never showed up.
It may be.
I know, I know.
It's gonna take me the interior.
It's okay structurally, they can beef it up.
I'll check it out. Look.
Okay, yeah. Okay, okay, great. Can I help you?
Yeah, hi, uh, my name's Mallory Allen, I am newer to the Covington area, I wasn't born and raised here, but my husband was. Um, I was curious, I'm interested in, um, owning backyard chickens and curious why that isn't allowed in the city of Covington?
I'm sorry.
Chickens.
Oh, okay, no.
With the city limits.
Not in the city limits.
Is there a reason why?
Um, we just, they adopted no livestock in the city limits.
Okay.
In nineteen eighty-three.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
A long time ago. Are we open, open to having that amended, I know neighboring towns like Wilmington, Carmel, they allow backyard chickens, but have protocols and standards like only up to six hens, no roosters, need to be confined within the backyard, within a coop. Um, I think it's a really beneficial way for people to own livestock per se, but with, I mean, if we want to specify like no hoofed animals, right, so no goats, no donkeys, no horses, obviously.
Goats.
Um, and within, you know, certain, uh, feet away from neighbors, but I think it could be a good addition to the town, especially with creating self.
The smell can also be a hindrance with the city.
Right, same, yeah, same with like outdoor dogs, you know, like as long as people are, you know, I know we have town ordinances on nuisance and smells and things like that, so that would still apply, but I just think, and I know even towns like Wilmington, Carmel, I know Champaign, you have to apply for a license within the city of, of, within their city, so that generates income for the, for the town. Um, but just didn't know if you guys would be opening, open to amendment for seeing if we garnish enough interest.
Thinking you opened a can of worms, I, I do, I mean, it's just, it's like, you know, if you let one person and then you got, how would that be to pollute something like that?
Especially when you get into the smells, like we're supposed to complain about the smell and how you decide what is or isn't offensive.
What, what does the policy actually say?
It says no, no.
No livestock.
Which is, is it possible now?
I mean, it's been in Texas since like nineteen eighty-three, but we're in twenty-twenty-five.
What's that?
It's been in Texas since nineteen eighty-three, you said, maybe we can reconsider, it's been how many years, we're in twenty-twenty-five. If we limit it, so four hens, no roosters, six hens, no roosters, confined to the coop.
Is it a sample?
I'd be, I'd, I'd be open to sending you like what other, those neighborhoods or those towns would be had in terms of their protocols and what's within their town ordinances.
You don't have any of that though, right?
I have it on my phone, but I'd be happy to send that pretty like via email or something.
The, the other issue becomes is whether it's small, but you cannot tell the difference between a female and a male.
Correct, yeah, correct, you can get sexing chickens.
Till suddenly, they're crowing.
Yeah, and you can get sexing chickens, but then, you know, that would be, you know, the, their responsibility to bring home the rooster or do what, with what you will.
I'm asking maybe since I don't know the castle's really, I think that's a good idea, but what if, what if they shed a petition and most of this town was okay with it?
I would rather see the ordinances of the other towns, okay?
Yes.
You get those and send one, bring it in and we'll, we'll talk about that at the next meeting.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay?
Thanks for considering.
All right, thanks Mallory. Bob?
Oh no, I'm just taking it all in, Brad.
Okay, okay, you don't have anything, man?
My CD at a later date, I'm just taking it.
Okay, Dale? Casey?
Um, the only thing I have, I would like to promote Keaton to a Class B employee for the street water department and up his pay to the starting range for a Class B employee which would be two or four fifty an hour. He's been here since December second and showing that he's improved everything, does the job and I believe it's time to move him up to that.
Okay. See if anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Justin?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Randy?
Yep.
Motion passes, five oh, four oh.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, congratulations, Keaton. Greg?
Um, well, as you seen, the pool got filled Thursday and Friday and open today, probably a new record between the two.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, it was, I had a pretty, I had a pretty good crowd up there today, even though like the water temp is sixty-six.
And the kids are loving it.
There's a few little, little issues, we're gonna take care of it, it's working.
When I opened.
I've already done a backwash on it and everything works.
When I opened the splash pad the other day, the water was, you know, comes out fifty-five, it was six, sixty, sixty-five, everything. Yeah, yeah.
Not me, man. Uh, and then the wastewater project, I talked to Jonathan today, we're still working on that punchless stuff and then we had a couple of pumps and drives go out, did you talk to him or did you?
I haven't talked to him, but.
Well, I talked to him today and he's kind of, the whole light, it's still a little, yeah, I don't know if it got hit or not.
It's a little.
It's got lighting protection on it.
Yeah.
Why didn't that work?
Yeah.
So, anyway, got that and the UV, electrical situation and the flow meter, like three things left to do now.
Okay.
We're getting close.
Good.
Um, let's see, I think that's it.
Okay, sounds good, thank you, Chan?
Uh, I know we've been getting a lot of complaints from town members about electric bicycles.
And scooters.
And scooters and all that good stuff, as a, there's nothing that we can enforce on that, they are classified as a bicycle. And they follow the same laws as a bicycle, the only one that we can enforce is if it's over nine hundred watts, which would make it over twenty-eight miles an hour, at that point, it's an age thing, being fifteen and older to be able to even ride one of those, but as far as anything, that way it's classified as a bike.
A bike?
It's both.
Okay.
Because they are assisted with, set, assisted with a pedal, they have brakes on them and they have other means other than just electric, so they're classified as a bike.
Okay.
Is there a visible way for you to identify it?
Only, yeah, I mean, I'm not gonna go look to every, pull over every kid on the bicycle and look at the numbers or anything, but I mean, try to enforce more on the tragic infractions if we see it, we can stop and talk to them and kind of look at it that way, but.
Were they around a stop sign or?
Yes, yeah. Same rules as a bike, I mean, they gotta have the lights on the headlight on the front, reflected on the back when it comes to evening hours. Under that, there's like nothing we can do.
Yeah, and golf carts, um, I saw a man driving golf cart the other day and his baby was on his lap, which, that is just, you know, I don't know what, I don't know.
It's specified as a state, like any other vehicle, unfortunately, I don't agree with it myself, um, if they're not, you know, buy it with seatbelts, they're not forced to wear the seatbelt.
Yeah.
Now, they do make attachments for golf carts where they can be installed, I mean, if that's something that is, you guys want to enforce, I mean, you won't have to be good with it, because I don't like that myself.
Brandon, what you're talking about.
As a seatbelt, having the kids trapped in, at least a seatbelt or a child seat, it can be done, they do sell aftermarket brackets.
And why would you have to tell a parent?
I don't disagree.
So, yeah, I don't think going to our state rep or state center, there isn't much we can do on them, um, Chan and I talked about that the other day, I, I do think it's a good idea for us to plan on, if you would, to have Caddy do a bicycle safety seminar at the grade school and middle school, unfortunately that's.
We'll see if they can create something.
Unfortunately, that's fall before that happens at this point, it's, it's a place for us to start in the interim.
Right.
You know, the sad part of it is, you and I talked about it the other day, there was, there's already been a kid in Terre Haute that was killed on one, the girl he was with is still critical, running into an ambulance, of all things. So, it, it's not a, a problem that's exclusive to us, it's, it's everywhere. But-
It'd just be a good thing for parents in the community to talk with their kids about safety.
Thank you for doing the research, I appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem. Um, I have nothing else, so other than that, Brad?
Okay, thank you. Bart?
Uh, just a few things, the, um, EMR, um, medical responder class, uh, test is Thursday, so we'll have, we'll have two on a test out. So, I mean, it's two more, long way past.
Okay.
That's, that's additional.
Yeah.
Good.
So, we'll have two more guys on the roster, build up, do medical calls. Um, uh, did you find a copy of the prints for the scene that worked?
I do, yes.
Okay.
And when are they coming?
Well, it got pushed back, the, the list has been started in April, they pushed it back a little bit, so we really need to get started because I think right now, once I do, we're still gonna be probably late August now.
Okay.
But we still gotta get work done, scene that's settled and everything else, so sooner the better, actually.
Do you, do you know where it's supposed to be?
Um, I'd have to go up there and see what we can pinpoint the-
There's a, there's a surveyor stake there.
Okay.
Um, you know-
I saw it, there was a satellite tower up there the other day, I don't know if that was up at that or the property for the trail, I don't know what, I didn't, I didn't see, but there was a-
Yeah.
Tracker there, whatever you call it.
Okay.
My car's gone, he'll be back tomorrow.
Okay.
We got to meet him on that, so let's see if we can get exact location.
Yeah, let's get the exact location and we can-
We gotta get started on that.
We can build the pads pretty quick, I've talked to the Town Creek guy, so, yeah.
We got, say we'll have classes start, well, I actually have our first class, not a burn class, but we're gonna have, uh, first classes that'll be starting in August, we'll go a lot yet to do the burn there, and then, um, then our, everything after that will be, we can do here, but so, yeah, that's a, main thing, get started on that. Um, our fundraiser this year for the Fourth of July, we decided we're gonna build a, a new, uh, portable cascade trailer. Um, our current one is on our squad, it's only three bottle cascade, what that does, for those who don't know, is refill air bottles on a scene somewhere.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're wanting to go to an eight bottle system with, with two pipelines and also with a big tower down. And also, it will al- also benefit not only us, but all of Tri-County, we're gonna make it on a, a small enough trailer that, you know, we can use our brush truck or any department can come and get it.
Sure.
Stuff, so, that's kind of what our goal was this year, um, we haven't got the final numbers quite yet, we're gonna be somewhere between twelve and sixteen thousand. So, I don't know, but, but they have given that to everybody on this, please.
Okay.
Just gearing up those street festivals, um, to get a town set up.
That'd be great. We'll put the banner on it soon as you get it up.
Brad?
Yes.
Brad has a random question?
Yes. Bart, you mean, Bart?
I know where you're at, huh?
You.
Uh, so, one of the grants that the community foundation has received is part of the trail that's been going in along the wall batch. We built in, uh, a component to offer water safety classes, uh, for those who might be traversing the river, who are kind of novices or new, whether it's in kayaks, hot boats, something like that. And is that something you guys have ever offered, is that something that you would have resources for bringing a trainer? Or would we need to maybe find somebody outside the area to bring them in?
So, more likely we can work with the DNR on getting, getting, uh, classes, you know, set up if, if we do that. Um, we, I mean, we don't, obviously we haven't done much, you know, on the river, you know, just a few, some temperies basically, but but we do have access, you know, to the boat and everything, you know, we do have to, well, but-
We would like to pay the fire department and then you use whatever resources you need.
Yep.
Keep the change in your pockets for just day-to-day operations and things like that, so.
Yeah, no, we can, we can, we can, we can take care of it. On you?
Justin?
I don't have anything tonight.
Kathy? Brad?
Couple things, one, Linda and with, uh, Taylor on how to amend this ordinance, which is, uh, twenty twenty-five dash five on city employees. We looked over several different ones and Taylor's final recommendation was to amend, um, section H, subsection four, uh, to read, if a superintendent, mayor, or council member over department feels it's necessary for any reason to write up an employee or poor, poor, sorry, poor job performance, no call, no show, infraction, insubordination, et cetera, termination may result after three write-ups. So, he kind of consolidated it into several, and I don't have a problem with it, I'd like to see, I would like to amend the original, uh, ordinance to include that change. So, I would move to do so.
Is that what he did?
Yes.
Well, that's the one I was hitting, the way he wrote it, yes.
Okay. Okay.
He kind of took what I had in several sections and pulled it into one and, uh, fine with it.
Okay. Uh, is that all you had?
Uh, forward this until we get past this first, I don't do it the second one.
I'm not gonna pass until I call in the AMV.
Sorry.
Can you do the other, can you do what you can, the second one, because he had more than here?
Yeah, yeah.
If the other one wasn't regarding the ordinance.
That's, that's okay, Brad.
Oh, well, the other issue that I was gonna say is, one thing we found out is that right now, employee files are split up everywhere by department. Including the requirement that we've got for monthly safety meetings, but there is no central location for the filing of all those files. And in my opinion, I'd like to see all of that moved to, to city clerk treasurer to be responsible for those, uh, personal files. And we'd move to, we'd stage a limit to that change.
I'm- Does anybody?
We, we've had situations, you know, we've had employees with multiple supervisors and-
We probably need to have Taylor draw an ordinance of, with that.
Only question is, that is, supervisors have access to that anytime?
Well, they'd have to.
It sounds like, you know, I have a lot filed yet, mine, it has my employees' personal files.
I don't have any of the place information in my office.
I mean, and that's what I add to, basically, if there's, is anything, and of course, if there is anything, a write-up or anything, and that's when I contact with the board. Then we go from there, but it's all locked and key under my file, that way there's no access for anybody else to be able to read their files unless needed. So, just something, think about that.
I don't know how the departmental supervisor can have access to it.
I don't know how far, like, all of your chain, your file show, and anything like that, or just for you?
I haven't been that far yet, never had to.
Right.
Recently, happened, us.
Why'd you refuse, I got one guy?
So, you're saying, phenomenal files, this office, you know, city building office?
Yeah, and it, it just-
And they wouldn't have their own?
Yeah, I mean, we've had situations, we've had employees with multiple supervisors, and then you have three files, you know, at some point, cities have a central location.
And they-
I mean, it's an issue, the supervisor should have access to some, it's in their department, I don't have an issue with that. It's just at some point, if there is an issue with, with city personnel being at a place that needs to be set up, one location, located, I have to choose on that. I, I don't know if they-
Although I'm sure, I'm sure they're not scattered within the departments, but it's, it, I mean, it, it sounds like-
I'm, I'm gonna, I'll ask AIM how they, and, and on the list serve, and then I'll get things back from multiple cities and town managers.
Yeah. Would you, with this, yeah, so that's what I propose.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm, so, I'll make a motion.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
I mean, the whole policy or the amendment, is that what we're voting?
You're voting on the whole policy.
On the whole policy, yeah.
That's what I mean.
Uh, as amended, that's right, as amended.
It, it, it's actually as presented, because it was never voted on, so you don't have to amend it, we just, I made the change in there when Taylor gave it to me. So, it's what it stated.
How are we voting then, as amended?
We never, we didn't accept it, it's, we're voting on it as presented, we never did, nobody voted on it, it's got, it's got the change in it.
We never took-
We never voted.
Just wanted to be sure.
It's on there.
Kathy? Brad?
Yes.
Randy? Motion passes four oh on the city policy.
When is that in effect, is that starting?
Today.
Today.
Randy, did you have anything?
Yes, I did.
Yes, I do. Uh, Courtney Parker, uh, Courtney Hyde Parker, uh, contacted me.
Anybody have thoughts on that?
She, she said she'd like to start this week, but, but whenever we did. And I think she's.
The ongoing, ongoing.
It'd be like for a month, is what I'm saying, it could be for a month, she was.
When soccer start?
That's not till August or November. So she'll be done.
Okay.
If, if everyone, I mean, she said she'd like to use a small pavilion. That sometimes, sometimes those pavilions are rented out or, or all core reserved. So I told her those weekends, she probably couldn't have those, but she liked to have that small number five like this.
Is that the one at the soccer field? Okay, does anybody have a problem with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Uh, and again, uh, I'm glad to bounce here. I did some numbers, I know we charge, or we charge, we take twenty-five dollars per team, uh, for tournaments, uh, baseball and softball.
Right.
I did some numbers, uh, if they use an entire case of can liners, entire cases, so.
That's not what it's for, Randy. It's not, it's not just that.
Well, that's part of it.
It's, it's just a policy that was adopted.
I'd like to talk about that and.
Sure.
See what's involved in that because it, it could, just with the product alone, is probably about ten dollars a team.
Yeah.
With, with the extra.
Based on how many teams?
Well, you could base it on the twenty teams.
Mm-hmm.
And they still wouldn't use a case of any of that.
Mm-hmm.
A full case, I mean, it's a penny a squirt for the soap, that's middle. So, you know, I did, I did the numbers, cause I wanna know how much, why are we, why are we taking it from a nonprofit? Uh, and, let me finish. Uh, then we got like clothes paper, we got soap, we got can liners, that's all that's involved. The dumpsters are dumped at a flat rate, and Marty cleans the bathrooms at a flat rate, so there's no extra cost there. And they pay their own utilities, so there's no extra cost there, only to them as they pay. I, I'm just trying to figure out where the twenty-five dollars, why, you know, why we're doing that.
It was because all other facilities charge that?
Well.
And ha- and have?
There, but with that being said, uh, I think, uh, cause they pick up their own trash, they do their own trash. They pay kids to empty out the cans, uh, they keep the baseball and the softball nice and clean. I don't have to take anything, very few items I have to take off the ground when I'm up. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure what we're doing, or why we're doing that.
They, they use the pavilions, but we, we can't rent pavilions.
I, I do rent pavilions, for, for soccer tournaments that come in, we do campers and we rent pavilions. So we're making money off of that as well.
Okay. Wendy, you wanna pull up, not today, tonight, but pull up when we did that.
That was, it's been quite a while.
And, and Bob's not familiar with it, cause you haven't done it for a while.
I was coming back when I was the league president, the end of last season.
Okay.
So, I mean, my, my discussion would be something totally different about what the city fathers founded, the Little League Program was for in nineteen fifty-two.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't think it was for the children and the parents to raise money to take care of everything, I think. But the way, when they founded it, it was for the community to take care of the children and stuff. So like the field, I, I pay for the gas to mow with the Little Leagues.
Mm-hmm.
I mow all the fields every week, I weed all the field, I drive.
Mm-hmm.
Everything inside that baseball field I take care of.
Right.
We pay for electricity, possession stand. We pay the city for electricity, run the lights in the scoreboard and big board.
Right.
Advertisement.
Right.
We pay the city for water, even the water down on the field that I use to water the grass, that I have no control over when I go home because if somebody's down it, it was turned on. So, all that money that gets paid to the city to take care of the city's baseball field. And then if we need new dirt and new grass on the field, then that's our responsibility to take care of it as a little league. But then we're paying the city for the use of their facilities.
Well, that's not exactly.
Well, if I, if I had two bunnies that were coaching All-Star teams and I took my All-Star team down on Sunday, when it wasn't a tournament, but we wanted to play all day long on the baseball field, we don't have to pay for that because it's a public park.
Right.
But if we have an organization to raise money to help for the betterment of the children, then we have to pay for the use of grass.
Mm-hmm. We, we enacted this, whoa, two or three years ago, and nobody's complained about it because.
Well, I'm not complaining about it, I just need to understand why.
The twenty-five dollars a team?
Yeah, we'll have to look that up.
I'll have, I'll look it up tomorrow.
Yeah, look it up and see.
If the Little League's responsible for taking care of everything inside that baseball field, I'm not complaining about it, I'm just trying to understand, what are we paying for? But, I mean, it's a, it's a public park, so.
Well.
The restroom in the middle of the park's open all day long.
Okay.
It's the new.
Other, other facilities, if you go to a, you know, have a tournament at another place, you're gonna pay. The whoever's putting the tournament on is gonna pay the, the facility or the city or town an amount of money out of that.
Yeah, he's correct, we would have to pay a facility fee to be in another person's tournament, okay? But if that person is taking care of that facility a hundred percent, why, why is someone else getting paid for that? That'd be, that's my question. Why is, why are we paying the city twenty-five dollars per team for, say, the twenty teams we have come to the tournament? When, what, what's the city provided for that Little League baseball field that the Little League hasn't paid for? That's the only question I have. I mean, we, we fertilize the grass, we mow the grass, we need to pick up trash, we pay for water, we pay for electricity.
Right.
Uh, it's a program so that the kids have cool hats and shirts, that the kids have equipment. And we put on clinics so the kids get skills to try to, you know, move on in life.
Yeah.
And I don't understand what we're paying for twenty-five dollars a team. If, if the city, I mean, if we came to you and said, hey, both, both fields, minor and major, need brand new dirt and grass. Somebody needs to grow dirt and grass, it's not a passion, because that's all we need to do without riding up the whole thing and starting over. If we came to you and said, we need you to fix your grass in the park, then I would understand paying twenty-five dollars for a team.
I, I think, I think, um, one thing is lights, you know? We put up new lights from time to time, replace bulbs, just things like that.
And there's, there's city park lights, so if a.
Yeah, they are.
A light goes out over the pickleball court, is there a jar on the pickleball court?
We don't, we don't, we don't have pickleball tournaments.
Okay.
We don't, we don't have an association that uses that, nearly exclusively though either. You know, what, what, that, this is like, is like saying, okay, we're gonna allow golf carts to be, you know, on city streets. So the police department then sets up, will permit it for this amount, and we compared it to other communities that allow it and what they charge to be able to do it. And that's how Shannon comes up with these. This is the same kind of thing, what we're saying is, is we've gone to other facilities, other communities that have these types of things and say, what do you, how do you charge them? And this is what we've told them, and that's how the ordinance was put together.
And I understand that, but I'm just questioning, what service are we getting for six hundred dollars for the weekend? I mean, the bathrooms get, bathrooms are getting cleaned and new toilet paper goes out in the bathrooms. The trash is getting emptied when the dumpster guy empties it Monday morning. The rest of it is taken care of by board workers and volunteers.
It is, it's, it's the way the rent from that, I mean, call it which one, it's where the rent factors.
Okay, so it's one of that, then, why am I doing the field work for the city parks' baseball field? Why am I mowing the grass, why am I?
Because it's, it's not one diamond for everybody, including softball, including city, including, you've got those, the use of those facilities to schedule things when you're wanting them, right?
Right, but anybody can walk into the park and use anything in the park.
But since you changed that just a couple of years ago, what's changed that, that they have to have the twenty-five dollars? If it hadn't, it hadn't gone on for, forever, and just within the last couple of years, that you said, it's changed. Okay, what's changed on baseball fields?
And if you adopted it because other communities had, then you look at other communities for everything that everybody questions, correct? Like if somebody brought up a question.
Which is why he just, when I was talking about location of employee files, that's what he suggested doing, is finding out what other like communities are doing.
So, Carlisle, Indiana has chickens. So.
Well, well.
If that's where we're gonna land, because somebody else did it, I just don't understand the twenty-five dollars a team.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm trying to understand myself, I just don't understand that amount. If it was ten dollars a team, I mean, what, how did you come up with twenty-five?
Have you, have the teams, when you go to another place, have you asked them if they're?
We put, we pay a flat rate to join the tournament, that's something in their flat rate that we pay.
Exactly.
I don't.
How much do you charge?
I believe it's three hundred dollars per tournament.
Okay, yeah, that's all.
So here's, here's the thing, so everybody knows the reality of it. So, when you sign your kid up for Little League, I think we have a hundred sixty-five kids playing Little League this year. And T-ball, P U E, minor and major, which that's pretty good now, it's a hundred sixty-five kids in games in summer, in summer. So, the registration fee for those kids to play doesn't even cover uniforms and hats for the kids. It doesn't cover any of the stuff on the field basis, it doesn't cover chalk, it doesn't cover quick dry. It doesn't cover umpires, sponsorship covers most of the umpires. And so every year when we're working this, say, we say we end the year with twenty thousand dollars, then the next year we enact year with twenty-one thousand five hundred. So it's a slow process to build up to work on big projects and everything. So, it's, yeah, we have to pay to go to tournaments, I just don't understand, we're, we're using your grass, I get that. It's city park property, and we're allowed to use it because we have a program where we schedule five weeks of baseball games. We take care of everything that those kids need, we don't come to the city and say, hey, can you, this is city, could you take care of electricity, possession, payment, lights? We don't do that, we pay it, the census bill, we pay it, water, we pay it, everything, we pay. But what service are we getting for the twenty-five dollars a team for tournaments? When most tournaments, the teams that sign up for the tournaments barely pays for the umpires.
Road.
Because for a tournament, you have to have certified umpires, you can't have a seventeen-year-old kid that's on summer break. You have to have actual certified umpires at tournaments. And the only rate right now that we luckily don't pay what everybody else pays in comparing other cities is we get to pay our umpires about fifteen dollars less per game than they would get if they were in Crawfordville Umpire. And that's just because Covington's a small town compared to the tournaments that Crawfordville Mafia has. So, I just, the twenty-five dollars a team could be better used to leave in the budget for the kids or something.
We'll look at it, Bob, yeah.
No, and, and I didn't come here to start arguing or anything, I just don't listen, but.
No.
No, I just, I don't understand what it is.
Yeah, I don't either.
Okay.
I don't know.
Well, I appreciate you guys, I gotta go.
Okay. There you go.
Thank you.
Sure. Do you have anything else from Amy?
Oh, I think that's about it.
Okay.
Maybe you should, you think that's enough? My brain's in place of like five minutes.